Started. I understand that the state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting, and can also be found on P H L Council dot com. I now note that the hour has come. The clerk will please call the roll to take attendance, and members that are attendance will please indicate that they are present. And when your name is called, please say a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mister Decker?
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, I am present and looking forward to today's session, thank you very much. Good morning, everyone.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, everyone. I am present.
Councilman Dom?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gottlieb?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, Congress President.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I'm here.
Morning.
Councilman Green?
Councilman Green? Councilman Green, is he connected?
I'm here, yeah, I have a microphone. I'm here.
Councilwoman Gem?
Good morning, um, good morning.
Morning.
Councilman Heenan? Councilman Heenan? Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, Council colleagues. Justice for Breonna Taylor, he's not guns.
Morning.
Morning.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, Mister President, good morning, colleagues, good morning, viewing public.
Morning.
Councilman O?
Morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues.
Morning, Councilman.
Councilman O'Neil? Councilman O'Neil? Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mister President and colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez?
Kicking off Hispanic Heritage Month, Buenos dias a mis colegas.
Hey, morning.
Councilman Scola?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues, present.
Morning, Councilman.
Councilman Thomas?
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, happy Thursday, everybody, and good morning to the listening public.
Morning.
Council President Clark?
And good morning, thank you very much, we have established our quorum. Despite the great need, there will be no invocation today. We will, however, observe a very brief moment of silent prayer for our city, its leaders, and the citizens during the current public health crisis. Not to mention other challenging events that we have been experiencing, as social unrest, the gun violence that continues to plague our city, so we pray for it all. Now observe a brief moment of silence. Thank you, thank you very much, and God bless us all. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September tenth, twenty twenty, and the chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
I move that the Council, uh, the Journal from September tenth, twenty twenty be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, has been moved in property second, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September tenth, twenty twenty stand approved, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye, aye, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leaves of absence, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mister President, on behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Thank you very much, and Chair, thanks to Councilwoman, and our next order of business is communications. Mister Decker, will you please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that you may have in your possession?
To the President, the members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty, I signed the following bill which was passed by the Council at its session on September tenth, two thousand twenty, bill number two zero zero three four five.
Thank you, Mister Decker. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. By way of reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council, unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. Just want to thank you so much for your anticipated cooperation. Mister Decker, will you please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by the members?
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers on behalf of Council President Clark a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of nineteen oh six North Twenty Fourth Street, located in the fifth Councilman district in accordance with the terms of chapter sixteen, seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code. And on her own behalf, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers one resolution urging Senator Pat Toomey and Senate leadership to take up and act on the Heroes Act, the Helping Homes Act, and the Moving Forward Act, sweeping and transformational resolutions to address the ongoing economic crisis co-sponsored by Congressman Dwight Evans and the Philadelphia Congressional delegation.
Thank you, they will be on next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gem offers a resolution commemorating the life of legal aid giant and former Pennsylvania Secretary of Education, Thomas Gilhul, a founding figure for community legal services, education equity, and the rights of the disabled and the poor, who led a rollicking life in pursuit of law and justice through eight decades of Philadelphia history.
Thank you, that will be on next week's calendar?
Councilman Jones offers an ordinance amending chapter nine thirty-five hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Criminal Record Screening Standards by amending definitions, revising restrictions, and amending and clarifying red amendments.
Prefer the committee?
And an ordinance amending title fourteen of the code entitled zoning and planning to revise certain provisions of chapter fourteen, five hundred, entitled overlay zoning districts by creating the M M P McMichael Park Overlay District.
Prefer the committee?
Councilman Johnson offers a, a resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to conduct hearings to examine findings of racism, nepotism, and mistrust within the first judicial district as set forth in a recently revealed report by the Center for Urban and Racial Equality.
And that will be on today's calendar?
And Councilman Johnson offers a resolution calling on the School District of Philadelphia to promptly negotiate a mutually agreeable new contract with the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers that prioritizes the health and safety of schools, staff, and students, and acknowledges the contributions of teachers and other staff, particularly during the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
That will be on next week's calendar?
Councilman Thomas offers a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings on the scourge of vehicular hit-and-run incidents in Philadelphia to give voice to victims and their families and seek solutions to reduce and then eliminate this problem of our city.
And that will be on today's calendar?
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Streets and Services to conduct hearings to examine the current status of trash and recycling pickups and examine ways to improve how this vital service is performed and how to ensure the job is seen as the community-minded career path it should be.
And will be on today's calendar?
And a resolution honoring and congratulating the West Catholic Girls Basketball Team on their successful two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty season, an overall twenty-two to six record in the Philadelphia Catholic League Girls Basketball Championships.
That will be on next week's calendar?
Councilman Scola offers an ordinance authorizing the Churchview Commons Condominium Association to own and maintain street lighting encroachments along the one hundred block of Church Street.
That is an ordinance, Mister Decker?
That is, Mister President.
That will be referred to committee?
Councilwoman Bass offers a resolution authorizing the Committee on Rules to hold hearings examining the City of Philadelphia's citywide historic preservation survey and the impacts of historic designation on the development of new buildings, repairing properties to meet historical commission guidelines, and all of the developments specifically in underserved and/or low-income neighborhoods.
Today's calendar?
Councilman O offers a resolution calling on the Kenny Administration to develop a plan to be more inclusive of city council when creating and implementing emergency public safety measures and restrictions.
And that will be on next week's calendar?
Also also a resolution calling on the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry to resolve ongoing complications within the state employment system, to ensure all eligible Pennsylvanians receive their entitled compensation in a timely manner.
That will be on next week's calendar?
And a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter by revising the powers and duties of the Art Commission to provide citizens the opportunity to vote on the removal or relocation of a city statue and monument through a public referendum process when there is public dispute, and to require the Commission to prepare an analysis evaluating the competing interpretations of the statue or monument before any removal or relocation.
The committee?
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members today, Mister President.
Thank you, Mister Decker, I believe Councilman Heenan, Councilman Heenan, are you on?
Council President, yes, thank you, and, uh, welcome colleagues.
Thank you, please report if the Councilman is being present. Thank you very much, Mister Decker, we have no reports from committee, so our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. There being no bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning the resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mister President, I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda. To consider to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar. Resolutions numbers two zero zero four two eight, two zero zero four two nine, two zero zero four three four, two zero zero four three five, two zero zero four three seven, two zero zero four three eight, two zero zero four three nine, two zero zero four four zero, two zero zero four four one, two zero zero four four three, two zero zero four four four, two zero zero four four five, two zero zero four four seven, two zero zero four four eight, two zero zero four four nine, two zero zero four five zero, two zero zero four five one, two zero zero four five four, two zero zero four five five, two zero zero four five six, two zero zero four five seven, two zero zero four five eight, two zero zero four five nine, and two zero zero four six zero.
Thank you. Second.
Thank you, it has been moved in property second, that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilwoman Parker, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, aye, aye, most carries, and we will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mister President, in addition to the resolutions being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers two zero zero four two seven, two zero zero four three two, two zero zero three six four dash A, and two zero zero three six eight dash A, all other bills and res- Mister President, did you all hear me reading those?
Yeah, you cut out for a minute, but we got it.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is being held.
All right, thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, before considering these resolutions and bills, we will consider public comment, and it will go as follows. Public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendar for the possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call by two one five six eight six three four oh six by five P M. the day before the session, to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support or against, and I emphasize that because in the event we have an overabundance of, of, of testimony, uh, public comment, we may have to pare that back, so we want to have a balanced witness testimony, so it helps us if you let us know whether or not you're in support or against the particular legislations. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Under ideal circumstances, they will each have three minutes, which we will do today, uh, however, uh, the time limit may vary from time to time. In order to be fair, all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit. So once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony, and when there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, you will be reminded of this. Once your allotted time is passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks, and shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. I also reserve the right to limit the number of speakers with repetitious comments, uh, because we frequently get that for a particular bill or resolution. So please be aware that the public meeting is being recorded because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I would now ask the chief clerk, please read the name of our first speaker, uh, we may, uh, have a brief moment to tee up the list.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Wow, good morning. Queen Judith Robinson, testifying on bill, is a resolution two hundred four four three. Good morning, all. Uh, this is about, uh, American Jewish Committee and Black Jewish Unity. I was always trained that charity starts at home. I would like to know what is the relationship between Jewish community and their fellow Black Jewish community? I want to focus right there. I, I would like to expand this discussion to talk about that, because all Blacks are not the same, are not a practice in the same religion. I myself, born and bred Hebrew Israelite, I am Jewish through and through, kosher, okay? I want to ask about the relationship between my fellow Jewish brother and sister and, and me, and people like me, Black and Jewish. Don't black us all up together like people of color, because we're not the same. What I've seen as a Black Jew practicing Jewish person is a relationship with everybody but your fellow practicing Jews, and the relationship is not equal, it's not balanced in that regard. So I did a little research to make sure I was had clarity, because the Urban League is our economic empowerment entity. I don't want to turn them into our kumbaya entity, okay? The Urban League was started in the name of economic development, so I want to keep our Urban League focused on that regard. A gentleman, I'm sure he was a fine gentleman, Edwin R. A. Sickleman, a Jewish gentleman, a son of a banker, was the National Urban League's first chairman. I can appreciate that, but I want to highlight the fact that he was an economist of the highest Columbia University, had all kinds of letters behind his name. I want to focus on economic development, okay? So there is a Black Unity, Jewish Unity Week, I'm sorry I missed it, but it's not, uh, it's, it should be ongoing, and I want to get in the mix, so that's why I'm calling today, to make sure that our relationship is an equitable relationship, that, that we talk about the economic situation, because since nineteen eleven, and here we are in twenty twenty, the Urban League was about focusing on funding, which is major, and resources. And we, here we are in twenty twenty, shouting all around, destroying the community all up and down, we in a hell of a mess. I want to make sure when we come out of this, we have clarity. So let's get clarity about our relationship, Jewish and Jewish Black Jews first, and then let's talk about the greater Black community, because I don't think we've been having truthful dialogue. We've been kind of waylaying the process. So I'm going to digress slightly to get this in. A no interest loan, okay, like what was given to the organization that's promoting this tiny house agenda, okay? I'm gonna bring it up again, seventy percent of Philadelphia yearly evictions are Black women and children being evicted, and I'll be damned if we have to lay down in a tent city in the, in the throes of a pandemic in order to talk about something basic as housing, okay? So, so when we talk about economics, funding, and connecting our Black and Jewish people with unity, charity starts at home, right here in Philadelphia, where we talking about lack of resources, lack of funding, redlining, all of those things. Let's not do a kumbaya until we get something accomplished, then we can have something to truly celebrate. I'll be right there with you, Black Jewish women, thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you for your testimony.
Sherri Cohen?
Hello?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, it's going, please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Okay. Good morning, Philadelphia City Council, my name is Sherri Cohen, and I'm an activist in many movements, protesters in our city, a former city council candidate, and I'm here to express support for bill number two zero zero three six four. I want to thank Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for introducing this legislation and all the other council members who have co-sponsored it. Today, we have a made an unprecedented convergence of crises, including a historic time of racial reckoning due to profound wounds caused by police and vigilante killings of unarmed Black people and the demands of the Black Lives Matter movement to dismantle white supremacy, abolish and defund the prison industrial complex, reimagine public safety, and develop community models of transformative, restorative, and healing justice. The police contract is unlike any other public sector contract. Not only does it provide for wages and benefits, but it decreases public safety by shielding the police from the consequences of its brutality, which has terrorized the Black community of our city for generations. Not only do we need the one public to be in contact for by this legislation, but as other cities survive, we need community participation in these contract meetings, and city council must be given the obligation to approve this contract. We must also remove the contract provisions which prevent or reduce accountability and demand new provisions to promote accountability. It is past time to bring the police contract negotiations out of the secret, secretiveness of closed-door negotiations and into the public light of transparency and accountability. As we know, this contract usually lasts three years. Time to transform the police contract is now. I want to highlight three provisions in the contract that endanger public safety. First, the contract requires a purging of disciplinary records. The contract provides that written reprimands in a personnel file shall be removed from the record after two years if the employee receives no further written reprimand or further disciplinary action within that period. Is the removal of disciplinary records allowed in any other workplace? Is this purging of prior records allowed for people who are convicted of crimes? By removing disciplinary records, the F O P has made it more difficult to identify patterns of misconduct by individual officers and by police departments as a whole. Second, the F O P contract provides for vacation time in lieu of a disciplinary suspension. The contract provides that the police commissioner may, in his or her sole discretion, char, um, charge a bargaining unit member's accumulated, accumulated vacation bank in lieu of time off for disciplinary suspension in all cases except those involving insubordination, charges of criminal misconduct, and refusal to submit to a drug or alcohol test. By allowing use of vacation time in lieu of a disciplinary suspension, the deterrent effect of disciplinary suspension is removed because it allows the officer to continue receiving normal pay during the suspension. Again, have you heard of this allowed in any other workplace? Finally, as we all know, the F O P contract limits discipline and civilian oversight by providing that the decision of the arbitrator shall be final and binding upon the city, the F O P, and employees covered by this contract. These provisions must be removed from the contract. The F O P contract must not require erasure of misconduct records, must not allow vacation time to be used by officers when under disciplinary suspension, and must not limit discipline and oversight by allowing the overturning of discipline of an officer from within the police department by binding arbitration. Last, I want to mention a twenty seventeen Washington Post investigation that found that Philadelphia has the second highest percentage of fired officers reinstated in the nation. Sixty-two percent of bad cops, those who had been fired, were reinstated due to binding arbitration from two thousand and six to two thousand and seventeen. That is shameful. That is a shameful lack of police accountability and oversight. It is time for our city's leadership to stand up for the FOP in the upcoming contract negotiations. Again, I thank city council for starting on this path to police accountability. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now consider today's resolution consent agenda. And I'll ask the clerk to read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, and without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please now read the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Resolution number 200428, entitled the resolution.
Council President?
Uh, you know what? Just got a text, uh, hold on one second, Mr. Decker, Councilman O'Neill.
I'd like to be recognized as president. I have some technical difficulties.
Thank you.
Staff help with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Please let the record reflect that Councilman O'Neill was on, that just had technical diff, and is present. Mr. Decker, please proceed.
Resolution number 200428, entitled the resolution recognizing September as Suicide Awareness Advantage Month in the city of Philadelphia and affirming the need for suicide intervention awareness and robust mental health services. And resolution number 20049, entitled the resolution permanently recognizing the third week of August as solar week in the city of Philadelphia. And resolution 00434, entitled the resolution honoring the award-winning Philadelphia Public School Notebook for its enduring legacy and commitment to education, justice, to independent journalism, and to centering and uplifting citizen voices through more than a quarter century of public school advocacy upon its transition to new management under chalk beat. And resolution number 200435, entitled the resolution urging the United House of Representatives to pass resolution 7947, also known as the Supporting Foster Youth and Families Through the Pandemic Act, providing substantial and additional aid to older foster youth and kinship families and preventing mandatory aging out during the COVID-19 pandemic. And resolution number 200437, entitled the resolution recognizing the 12th Annual Block Cactum Boot Camp, which will be held virtually for the first time ever on Saturday, October 24, 2020. And resolution number 200438, entitled the resolution supporting the Minority Business Development Agency and recognizing October 5 through October 9, 2020 as Philadelphia Minority Business Enterprise Development, MED Week, which provides critical information, resources, opportunities, and inspiration to the minority business community. And resolution number 200439, entitled the resolution recognizing and honoring Dana Jenkins, principal of Roxton High School, on the occasion of her retirement after 20 years of dedication and service to the school district of Philadelphia. And resolution number 200440, entitled the resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Point Breeze Urban Renewal Area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1308 through 1314, 1318, and 1336 through 1344 South Capitol Street, 2025 through 2029, 2031, 2033 through 2035, and 2038 Reed Street, 1400, 1402, 1410, 1413, 1415, 1419, 1421, 1426, 1428, 1430, and 1440 South Taylor Street, and 2024 Warken Street. And resolution number 200441, entitled the resolution commemorating the 55th anniversary of the signing of the Voting Rights Act. And resolution number 200445, entitled the resolution recognizing the American Jewish Committee and the National Urban League's Black Jewish Unity Week and the ongoing efforts to partner and work together in creating a more equitable future. And resolution number 200444, entitled the resolution honoring the life of Eleanor Sokolov and her legacy, legacy of service and commitment of musical education in Philadelphia. And a resolution number 200445, entitled the resolution honoring Richard M. Engler upon his, upon his retirement as Temple University's president and his contributions to Temple and Philadelphia. And resolution number 200446, entitled the resolution calling on Mayor James F. Kenny to declare gun violence a citywide emergency and develop an urgent, unrelenting response to the gun violence epidemic plaguing black and brown neighborhoods in Philadelphia, and reaffirming the commitment of the City Council of Philadelphia to continuing collaborate, to continue collaborating with and supporting the work of the mayor, our city agencies, the criminal justice community, and non-governmental partners to mitigate this deadly epidemic. And resolution number 200448, entitled the resolution honoring and congratulating the Mastery Charter of the Philadelphia Development Authority. Number 1, entitled the resolution calling on the Pennsylvania Department of Education to cancel the PSSA and Keystone exams for the 2021, 2020, 2021 academic year and redirect the resources to providing the best digital learning environment possible. And resolution number 200454, entitled the resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street address as 1824 East Huntington Street. And resolution number 200455, entitled the resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street address as 2103 East Haggard Street. And resolution number 200456, entitled the resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street address as 2451 through 2453 Frankford Avenue. And resolution number 200457, entitled the resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown Urban Renewal Area identified by house number and street, street address as 2514 Coral Street. And resolution number 200458, entitled the resolution recognizing September as National Recovery Month in Philadelphia and celebrating the 19th annual pro act recovery walks to promote recovery and walk to end the stigma surrounding drug and alcohol addiction. And resolution number 200459, entitled the resolution recognizing September 2020 as Childhood Careness Awareness Month in Philadelphia in honor of childhood cancer patients, caregivers, survivors, and those who have succumbed to the disease. And resolution number 4200460, entitled the resolution appointing 15 individuals to the Philadelphia Passion and Garment Industry Task Force.
Is that it, Mr. Decker?
That's all there is, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved to second that each of the resolutions on the consent agenda be adopted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, aye, aye. And each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda have been adopted. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, uh, we please read the title of resolution number 200427.
A resolution proclaiming the week of September 14, 2020 as census week in Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, aye, aye. And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of resolution number 200432.
A resolution calling on the Philadelphia Postmaster to meet with Congressman Dwight Evans and the Philadelphia Congressional delegation to discuss the alleged removal of sorting machines in the Philadelphia area post office or post office, which would cause delays in the processing of census forms and mail-in ballots.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. This has been moved and properly second. That the resolution be adopted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, aye, aye. And that resolution is adopted. The clerk will please read the title of bill number 200364-A.
An ordinance amending Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code and titled Contracts and Procurement by adding a new chapter, 172300, entitled Public Hearing Required Prior to Execution of a Labor Agreement with City Workers Represented by the Fraternal Order of Police with Respect to Workers' Terms and Conditions of Employment by establishing certain definitions and requiring a public hearing within 30 days prior to the city entering into or ending a labor agreement with city workers represented by the Fraternal Order of Police.
Thank you. Before calling for a vote, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, I recognize as an elected public servant, it is critically important to proactively communicate with and listen to the people we serve. I also recognize how important it is to engage in long overdue reforms that will bring transparency and accountability to the police contract process. I want to thank the countless Philadelphians who have pushed for these reforms for a very long time. Thank you for your hard work. We would not be here today without you. I also want to thank you, Council President, and our leadership team for your foresight and insight around the New Normal Budget Act, and also Representative Jordan Harris for convening the Police Reform Working Group. Bill 200364A will require for the first time ever in the city of Philadelphia, public input via a city council hearing as a part of the police contract negotiation process. The most recent extension to the FOP contract was submitted without public comment or input from this body or the people we serve. At a time when revenues were expected to drop rapidly, we knew painful cuts to personnel and services would result. However, because there was no opportunity to express input, uh, the police department budget still represents over $700 million, or nearly 15% of our city's total operating budget annually. For too long, these contracts have been used as a sword and shield by the police union. Not only do they include millions of dollars of spending on salaries and benefits, but they have been used to establish internal disciplinary procedures that have led to millions of dollars of spending on back pay and settlements as offices overturned misconduct allegations. And who knows what these appeals truly cost us? This legislation seeks to mandate public transparency and accountability in a process that has been shrouded in secrecy for far too long. We can no longer afford to let these important discussions happen behind closed doors because we have seen the results and they are devastating. With the voice of the people as a part of this conversation, we will be able to hold ourselves and our police department accountable. We will be more responsible in how, how we spend valuable and limited taxpayer dollars, and we will be able to better support the people who vowed to serve and protect us. This system is not working, and the reforms we adopted last session and are considering now are recognition that for far too long, our present has been dictated by our past. We will no longer accept the same old, same old. The time for change is now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you very much. This bill haven't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Uh, Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
No.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill?
No.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quinone Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are 15 and nays are 2. Majority of all members have been voted in the affirmative to bill passes. Mr. Decker? Mr. Decker? Okay. Um... Councilman Dom, did you wish to be recognized now?
I'm sorry at the end for the speeches. I should have put that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number 200368-A.
An ordinance amending Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code and titled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity by adding a new chapter, 102500, entitled Prohibited Physical Contact by Peace Officers to Prevent Unnecessary Death or Injury Via Asphyxiation by prohibiting certain physical contact by peace officers.
Thank you. This bill haven't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quinone Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye. The ayes are 17, nays are 0. Majority of all members have been voting in the affirmative to bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution author, a resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to conduct hearings to examine findings of racism, nepotism, and mistrust within the First Judicial District as set forth in a recently revealed report by the Center for Urban and Regional Equality introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council, thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings on the scourge of vehicular hit-and-run incidents in Philadelphia to give voice to victims and their families and seek solutions to reduce and then eliminate this problem from our city, introduced by Councilman Thomas. And Mr. President, Council President, uh, Thomas is asked to speak on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, colleagues. Um, currently, right now, in the city of Philadelphia, we're facing a number of issues, and we discuss them all the time, whether we're talking about the coronavirus, the financial crisis, the gun violence, and the issues that our children are facing in schools. Uh, one of the issues that is not getting the attention it deserves is the number of hit-and-runs that we have in the city of Philadelphia. We have a number of intersections in the city of Philadelphia that just aren't safe, and we have a number of families who've been, um, put in positions where they've had unfortunate loss. Uh, today would have been, uh, Rob Evans' 38th birthday. Um, Rob was killed in January in a hit-and-run, uh, right outside the police station at Broad and Champ Loaf. My thoughts and prayers go out to him and his family because I know they're mourning right now. So, um, while they are mourning, I am happy to be able to introduce this resolution so we can be able to. to examine this issue and her- hopefully curb the number of hit-and-runs that we are seeing in the city of Philadelphia, and just improve some of the traffic, uh, flaws that we have as a municipality. So, thank you, Council President, for allowing me to speak on this bill. Um, again, uh, my thoughts and prayers go out to all the Philadelphians who've lost someone due to this, um, this, this, this problem that we have as a municipality, and I'm hoping that we can examine this issue and put ourselves in a position where other families in the future won't have to go through this issue. Thank you again, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, you want to make a motion?
That part probably matters a little bit. Um, I move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved to probably second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Streets and Services to conduct hearings to examine the current status of trash and recycling pickups and examine ways to improve how this vital service is performed and how to ensure the job is seen as the community-minded path it should be, introduced by Councilman Thomas.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Rules to hold hearings exam- examining the city of Philadelphia's citywide historic preservation survey and the impacts of historic designation on the development of new buildings, repairing properties to meet historical commission guidelines, and all other development specifically in underserved and/or low-income neighborhoods, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution will be adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage counter, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, and we will now move to our speeches after we have concluded our calendar for the day. So, I'd just like to say for the record, uh, prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record, at the time that we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft's team to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized in order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. So, with that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I want to briefly take a moment to thank all of my colleagues for signing onto my resolution commemorating the fifty-fifth anniversary of the Voting Rights Act. The resolution recalls the legacy of the great John Lewis and commits our council body to the urgent work of protecting black votes here in Philadelphia. It is important that we remember the leaders and the martyrs who gave their lives for our abilities to vote. These past seven months, our country has begun the difficult but necessary process of reckoning with the legacies of black disenfranchisement, oppression, and police brutality. We must recall our shared history, good and bad, and if we want to learn from our mistakes of the past, we have to build a better future. Currently, our democracy as we know it is under threat. White nationalists group are seeking renewed energy, and COVID-nineteen presents a number of potential barriers to voters' participation and accurate vote count in November. It will take all of us, the city, the state, and federal elected officials, community members, advocates, faith leaders, to protect the integrity of the upcoming election and to ensure the outcome is honored. So, many of my colleagues are already doing the extremely important work of ensuring that our constituents are registered to vote and have the information they need to participate in the election. I want to thank all of you for your important work, and I look forward to collaborating with you in all the weeks to come as we continue this work and continue the ongoing struggle against white supremacy. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. Um, today I introduce a resolution which I think speaks on behalf of many of us in elected positions, whether city-state, uh, and that has to do with the, um, unemployment compensation, uh, checks that many Philadelphians have yet to receive, and it's not just limited to Philadelphia. And, and, and this resolution really urges the, the state to, uh, look at how they're processing, uh, this money. I, I have, as many of you have, been dealing with constituents who have been, who have, uh, are entitled to a, a compensation check but have not received a compensation check in months. And the, and the, the telephone line that we call does not, uh, no one picks up, uh, the online tools don't work, and I think the reason is because people are not at their jobs working. And I, and while I understand about COVID-nineteen, I would just say that that seems to me a critical function of the state to ensure that people are able to get the money that they need to live, pay their rent, feed their children. That is an essential thing to do. Uh, it's extremely frustrating for all of us as people come to us continuously to try to help them get the money that they are supposed to receive. There are some errors as well that are easily resolved, and yet the answer has been that they have to wait for a phone call from a telephone number they don't recognize, and if they don't pick up that, that, that phone call, they're put on the back of the list. This is really unacceptable. I urge, you know, the, the state to please make sure that this office is staffed so people can get answers and get their checks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmen. On speeches on the part of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just want to take a moment to say congratulations to West Catholic, uh, girls' basketball team. Uh, they were the team that we honor today as our champion of the week. Um, and I also just want to say a special congratulations to their coach for making history. She is the first black woman to, uh, coach a team to a Catholic championship, and I think that that is something significant, because we are looking to inspire our young people in as many ways as possible. Uh, we also looked at the resolution, um, surrounding the P.I.A. double A, and I'm not going to go too long into it, but, uh, we all know on council that we have to do better as it relates to servicing our children in the city of Philadelphia, and the resolution is just looking at equity as it relates to sports. Um, athletic, athletics is all, all often used, um, as a tool to inspire young people to, uh, participate in activities that are essentially positive. Athletes have to remain academically eligible to participate. They have to stay, um, out of trouble. Um, and often, young people in Philadelphia who participate in athletics are dancing the line between the streets and the schools, and it's important that we get this particular thing right, which is why I introduced the resolution, and I look forward to working with my colleagues to see more action around that. Um, this evening, we had the Disadvantaged Communities Task Force conversation. We've had three conversations already, and I have to be honest, they've been phenomenal. So, I appreciate the citizens of Philadelphia who take the time after work and after school to, uh, engage us in conversation and tell us, um, some of the areas that they're suffering in and ways that we can better service them as government. So, tonight's conversation will take place at six P.M. I want to thank Councilmember-at-Large Derek Green for agreeing to moderate our conversation today, as well as my co-chair, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, um, and I look forward to the conversation. Last but not least, census, 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 please complete your census, folks. Um, it's a major issue. It's an important issue. My team and I, we've been out canvassing areas, and, um, the response that we're getting is definitely not the one that we ideally want to hear. So, colleagues, I know we have work to do as it relates to the census, as it relates to educating people, as it relates to making sure people have access to the materials they need so they can complete that form. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues, and I look forward to working with you throughout the course of the week.
Thank you, Councilmen, and keep up the good work. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank my colleagues for voting in the affirmative and passing the Let No Chokehold Bill. Um, the bill was, was introduced in the spirit of George Floyd, who lost his life when a police officer put his knee on his neck for eight minutes and forty-six seconds. Uh, I thank Commissioner Danielle Outlaw for already adopting this policy as a part of the Philadelphia Police Department, and I also want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Jamie Gaudier, as well for giving me some additional, um, support and advice around this legislation to make sure, um, it's fine-tuned and, most importantly, uh, works as it relates to holding those accountable who engages and using the types of chokeholds that result in a loss of life of the individuals on which they are apprehending. Uh, I believe that, um, the life of George Floyd was not taken in vain. Uh, we have recently saw, um, a major historical settlement, um, as relates to the loss of the life of Breonna Taylor as a result of some actions by law enforcement officials, but we still want justice for Breonna Taylor. And so, I thank all my colleagues for again passing the Let Fully Breathe No Choke, No Chokehold Bill, but also I feel like I'm working in a twilight zone, because as we address the issue of police reform, uh, we also are addressing the issue of census gun violence that we are experiencing here in the city of Philadelphia. Um, I continue to echo the support of my colleague, Councilman Jamie Gaudier, as she says that we are in a state of an emergency, and this issue should be addressed as such. I thank my colleague, Councilman Curtis Jones, for establishing a committee to look at specifically the last one hundred shootings that have taken place here in the city of Philadelphia. We have a lot of work to do. Uh, we all have to roll up our sleeves and find out how are we going to reduce or eliminate this issue of gun violence that we're seeing in the city of Philadelphia. It does not matter your philosophical approach. Some may want to be heavy on prevention. That's great. Some may want to be heavy on law enforcement. That's great. Some may want to be heavy on getting on the streets as it relates to boots on the ground. That's great. Some may want to be heavy on policy and legislation. That's great. But we need all hands on deck. We have to address this issue comprehensively if we're going to have a safer city, if we're going to make sure our children are safe, that we're going to make sure our women are safe, and that we're going to make sure that we're saving the life of these countless African-American young men that we're seeing dying day after day in the streets of Philadelphia. And I believe we're, we're experiencing a level of black-on-black genocide, because it's totally to the point where we may lose a whole new generation of young people. And so, um, I just want to echo the urgency around this issue. I thank all my colleagues, um, again, for their support on passing the Let Fully Breathe No Chokehold Bill, as well as working with me as we address this issue of census gun violence here in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for your hard work on this very, very critical issue. Um, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Quinone Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all my colleagues. As we kick off Hispanic Month, um, I want to thank all of my colleagues who, um, every year participate and support, uh, the many events throughout the city of Philadelphia. You know, personally, as the only Latino on council, I want to thank all of you for, um, your support and your attendance at the many, many events and activities throughout the city. Uh, this week, Biden Harris, uh, pu- put out a plan on the renewal, recovery, and respect of Puerto Rico. It is not a stated plan for Puerto Rico, but it does speak to the historical racial inequities that have existed on the island of Puerto Rico. Again, I want to thank my colleagues who during Hurricane Irma and Maria and the subsequent earthquakes for all your support for PA, for Puerto Rico, and our recovery efforts, uh, on the island, many of our corporate partners here in the city of Philadelphia, Einstein Hospital, PICO, AT&amp;T, and others who stepped up. Why is the plan important? It's, the plan is important because it's the first time a major ticket recognizes, um, the situation in Puerto Rico and speaks to equity and funding on healthcare, education, infrastructure, uh, and many of the, um, items highlighted by the protesters in the recent months. Uh, I join my sisters. I know that my council colleague will be hosting an event with Kamala Harris, uh, this, this morning, um, in their sister-sister conversation. As an Afro-Latina, uh, I am very, very excited about meeting with her and Latino leaders to talk about this, um, uh, recovery plan of Puerto Rico. Why is it important? Because I think it speaks to the commitment, uh, by this, by this ticket in particular, um, to really use the federal government and its capacity to support marginalized communities, to support, um, to Councilman Johnson's point, uh, to support people, American people. If the United States is going to regain its, its, um, standing in the world around democracy, fairness, and equity, uh, what it does with Puerto Rico will symbol that renewed commitment to, um, making, uh, the American people feel pride in who we are and healing, um, some of the divisiveness that we are all the, living under a pandemic. So, I join all of my colleagues in saying what we see in gun violence, what we see in our city, what we see in these encampments is a result of a federal government who have left marginalized communities and cities like us, um, struggling on our own, and I hope that over the next fifty-plus days, people not only let themselves be counted in our census, but they let themselves be counted through their vote, and that the government is reminded that government is of the people and for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I, um, thank you for tolerating my handheld device this week. I couldn't get in the chat room, but thank you for acknowledging.
Yes, uh, I'm actually, we're gonna have to, uh, have a conversation about this chat, because the chat and the information I'm getting sometimes doesn't jive with the sequence that the council members believe that they are in.
That's, that's fine with me. I am.
Can only do what I can do. Everybody's given opportunities.
This is a new norm. So, what I wanted to rise today and say, um, to my colleagues, we had a conversation, uh, last week before we went public, talking about the devastation in parts of Philadelphia to small businesses and in particular minority and female businesses, some of whom have been hit by a pandemic, hit by social unrest, and hit so hard that they may never come back. We passed today a resolution honoring Midweek, Minority Enterprise Development Week. Uh, we have been in this country, um, for thirty-six years, recognizing the contributions economically of minority and female companies. In Philadelphia, we've been doing it since nineteen eighty-four. Um, during this crisis that we've experienced in twenty-twenty, they have been hit hard. Whether you're talking about mom and pop barber shops, beauty salons, or whether you're talking about big businesses that, that have been clobbered by all that is going on, almost in a perfect storm. But I want to recognize the committee that puts together Midweek. This isn't their day job. During the day, they're doing things like providing funds from the CARES Act, PIDC, uh, OEO, uh, the, uh, Commerce Department have been in every neighborhood, in every district, providing these kinds of resources, particularly Ayola Harper, who has carried the torch for minority and female companies, uh, Alice Dungy James, who goes back, uh, to the, the days when it was the Minority Business Enterprise Council. I want to acknowledge them. Normally, we would have them in council, but because of social distancing, we can't do that. But I wanted to make sure they understand that this body, this council appreciates what you do for every district in the city of Philadelphia. We know that October fifth and October ninth will be this year's Midweek. Um, we want you to know that we care deeply about your mission. I want to support you in every way that we can. Some businesses have started to reopen. Um, so people ask, well, what can we do to support? Buy something, whether it is Denise's Bakery on North Twenty-second Street, whether it is Blue Soul on Chestnut Street that just had a reopening, uh, yesterday. And I know, uh, Councilman Green, Member Green, knows exactly, exactly where they are. Um, so we want you to support these businesses, um, and buy and spend, you know, more than maybe you normally would, because they're depending on this stuff. The CARES Act can only go so far. Restoring consumer confidence is the next shoe to fall. So, thank you again, Midweek Committee. Uh, we will be, uh, supporting you. Uh, things that we are going to look at, our workshop will be entitled, uh, Opportunities Pres- Presented Post-COVID. There's going to be a whole new opportunity. Same word again in, in China for crisis is the same word for opportunity. We want minority and female companies to take advantage. same word for opportunity. We want minority and female companies to take advantage of post-COVID opportunities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to thank my colleagues for all the work they've been doing, not only over the summer, but also if you listen to today's council session, the issues of gun violence, the issues in reference to civil unrest in our city, state, and nation is being addressed by members of council. I also want to thank council members Isaiah Thomas and Catherine Gilmore Richardson for their leadership as co-chairs of the Disadvantaged Communities Task Force. Pleasure to have the opportunity to co, to host the small business conversation this evening at 6:30 PM. And it's interesting that Councilmember Jones brings up MedWeek because, you know, we, as members of this council and living in the city of Philadelphia, we've been dealing with a lot of challenges this year. But one of the things that we're also trying to address is the lack of economic opportunities in our city. And so many businesses, as Councilmember Jones stated, have been devastated by COVID, and they have not been able to grow in our city. And so when you look at the fact that the city of Philadelphia is 44% African-American constituency, we must do better to provide opportunities for businesses in the city of Philadelphia for them to grow and really have an opportunity to participate in all of the economic development projects that come into our city. Now, recently, there was a selection made for Penn's Landing for Significant Development, a multi-billion dollar development. Organization that was selected is not based here in the city of Philadelphia. But what truly troubles me about this selection, and there's been a lot of conversation about the fact that they are not requiring a public subsidy, but unlike the other entities that put in their bid, this organization did not have significant, if at all, minority inclusion in their proposal. They are, they're now working on an economic opportunity plan, and they're talking about having a 20% local minority-owned equity partner in this project, talking about 20 to 30% MBE participation for design, construction, and professional services, 15 to 20% women-owned businesses, and doing their best efforts for disabled business entities to be a part of this project. From a workforce perspective, they're saying they're going to try to meet or exceed 35 to 40% diversity and have 50% minority, sorry, 50% minimum of local residents to work on this project, and also hire an EOP consultant to monitor them. But what's concerning is that in their proposal, this was not a priority. And we can go back and forth on some of the other concerns people raised with other submitted bidders, but at least all of them had a commitment to have minority inclusion in their proposal. This is an entity that's now doing it after the fact. So from my understanding, the Delaware River Waterfront Corporation is going to hold them accountable. This body will also hold them accountable. Now, they say they will not need any public subsidy for this multi-billion dollar project. Having been around for some time, I find that interesting. And I find it surprising that they will not have to come back to this body for some type of subsidy or other type of legislative assistance. But I'm a firm believer that actions speak louder than words. So we'll see what their actions are. But my concern is that their words do not start with inclusion, and I have a, a concern that their actions won't end with inclusion. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Looking at that for a number of reasons. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Thank you very much, Council President. So I wanted to say that I was intrigued by, but ultimately welcomed the news that the proposed bills for reinstating and expanding the Emergency Housing Protections Act will come to council of the whole. More than anything else, I believe this speaks to the utmost importance of the looming eviction crisis and the need for all of us to become deeply engaged in and immersed in housing and the eviction prevention work. As I mentioned in my comments last week, urgency of action is the utmost importance. The mayor requested and received a stay from the courts until September 23rd on evictions. But the court has made it explicitly clear that despite the new CDC guidelines and protections on the, and declarations that at risk is the public health and safety, and made clear that there is a danger of mass evictions to public health and safety at this time, that it will intend to move forward in an unlimited amount after September 23rd. Hundreds of thousands of renters were cost burdened even before the pandemic began. And that means the devastation will hit every single district and every single council member. Data from the Philadelphia Eviction Project, which was created through this council's commitment to addressing the eviction crisis, made it clear. Seventy-four percent of evicted people are black. Seventy percent are women, and half of them are parents or caregivers. The CDC has made it clear that poverty cannot be the cause of further brutality, dislocation, and a lack of responsible alternatives for our people. But this order has been widely interpreted across the state. And I'll be very honest, Philadelphia's municipal court interpretation is among the least generous in protecting, in protecting our renters and puts them out of line with other county courts. Hundreds of eviction filings continue to occur outside of city law, and only a handful of landlords are seeking diversion when our courts were allowing proceedings to continue. This is why the Emergency Housing Protections Act and the changes that are being proposed is a top priority, and why action on the bills before council of the whole cannot wait. I look forward to having a broad educational process for all my colleagues on what's happening in our courts. We are going to be scheduling briefings for the council members in the coming weeks. This is in addition to the hearing that we had, the briefing that we had, rather, this summer on diversion and other updates that members of the Committee on Housing have already done. Housing is a human right. This is a very difficult situation, but we do have the power to act and we do have to take action. Thank you very much. And by the way, happy birthday, Council President.
Thank you. It's good to be 55. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take this moment and thank you, Council President, and happy birthday. And all of my colleagues and many in council, the administration, and many of the people, residents of the city, for their condolences on the passing of my mom last week. I really appreciate it. And also for those who may be celebrating the Jewish New Year tomorrow night, a happy and healthy new year to everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. I believe that concludes our list of individuals. So with that, Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for motion.
Council President.
Yeah?
Council President.
Say, Councilman Johnson.
Council President.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a brief announcement, if you don't mind?
Sure, Councilman.
I will be hosting, just a reminder, I will be hosting a meeting with the Office of Transportation and Infrastructure immediately following City Council.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, September 24th, 2020, at 10:00 AM.
Second.
Thank you. This has been moved in probably second. The council stand adjourned for Thursday, September 24th, 2020, 10:00 AM. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you all very much.